Good morning, welcome to the November 4th regular session of the Board Supervising Meeting Role Call. Brian?
Here.
Kurt and Bob?
Here.
Layla?
Here.
Lynn?
She said here.
Here.
I can't hear.
You can't hear you.
Schwartz?
Here.
I can't hear.
Should I try again?
We have something on.
Any better?
There we go. Schwartz?
Here.
Paul? Uh, here. Perfect, thank you. Uh, please join in a moment of silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stay as you're able to ignore the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda received, closed or as amended?
Uh, so moved with the amendment. I'd like to move item twelve up before the closed session, item eleven.
Okay. All right. Um, all in favor say aye.
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 Close same side, motion carries. Uh, any public comments, this is the time for anyone to speak on an issue that is not on this morning's agenda, either in the room or online.
My name is Mike Mush, I live at three oh three First Street in Washburn. I had this big speech I was gonna give here this morning about something, and after talking to Rory it seems a little bit in vain now. Um, July eighth, I came to the board with three concerns of some things going on in Washburn. Two of those concerns were taken care of right away, and I thank Rich and Linda for taking care of those problems. And I thank Rory for trying to do what he can do about the third problem. It was my understanding, when I moved to Washburn, that the property line for your property is so many feet from the center of the road, I don't know exactly what the feet is, and then your property line was there. And maybe I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding was that you did not own the land from the property line to the edge of the road. That was for access or frontage, whatever you wanna call it. So I always considered that that land from my property line to the edge of the road was owned by the county. It was county land. You couldn't build on it, you couldn't park on it, you couldn't store things on it. I have a guy across the street from me that has a truck parked in his backyard for a year that hasn't moved. They tell me you can't do anything about it because it's on his property. I have a guy that butts up to the back of my property, has a car set in the backyard, been there for five years, hasn't moved, can't do anything because it's on his property. But now we have a guy that parks a junk boat two feet off the road on what I consider county land, and you tell me you can't do anything about it. Because of the way the ordinance, or there is no ordinance, or how it's written, or whatever. I don't understand how things like that can go by and nothing's said. He's two foot off the road, come wintertime, when the plows plow the road, and then widen where they've plowed, this boat's gonna be riding away. And this isn't a little boat, it's a triple axle trailer, big, big cabin cruiser. It's, it's not water worthy because it's got two outdrives on it, and one's completely gone, so you couldn't even put it in the water if you wanted to. It looks terrible, you come off the two eighteen onto Maple Street, you pull into Washburn, and all you see is this big ugly boat sitting there, which from what I can understand is on county land. Now, Rory gave me some, Rory gave me some information this morning that basically they can't do anything about it the way it's written now, or something. I just, my concern is, if, if he can do this, and there's no consequences, there's nothing you can do about it, how much other stuff is gonna happen now with no consequences? Once people find out that I can do whatever I want with that frontage, because you can't, you can't touch me. I guess if I'm just asking the board, or whoever's in charge of it, to maybe relook at that in ordinance, or if there's not one, or redo it, or whatever, to enforce the fact that you can't use that land between the property line and the road, if it's really owned by the county. Is it? Thank you.
Mike, thank you for coming and getting voice and your concern out there. We have been looking at that issue, we have several ordinances that we are looking at, trying to update for other problems as well. Right now, just we have quite a bit on our plate, trying to get to it, so, but it's not gone away. It's still something we are looking at and seeing how we can correct that problem.
Okay, thanks.
Any other public comments?
Good morning, I'm the board chair and supervisors and everybody listening. My name's Keith Caspar, and I just wanted to advise this group that I've recently taken the position as a district representative for Congresswoman Asha Dickinson. So as I travel throughout my nine county region of a larger twenty-two county district, I look forward to talking to you good folks and being a good listener, potentially a resource for this municipality. And for, as we trend towards the close of the year, potentially working with members of your staff with regard to what's called community project funding, or CPF, and, and your director of finance, I've known for some years, I think she probably knows all about that, but to my understanding, the guidance can change every year. And the windows to submit those can change, and it's a very small window for us. So as you get into any potential project funding needs, if I can be a resource and a venue to convey that information up the chain, I certainly appreciate working with you good folks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Move on to presentations, it's Behavioral Health Realignment with Julie Davidson.
Hi, Julie Davidson from Eastern Iowa Disability Alliance. I have the handouts, is it okay if I give you these? Thank you guys.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I just noticed in your names. And I sent a PowerPoint, so I'm not sure how to access. Can you bring it up, otherwise I'll just give you my handout.
And Al back there? Lori had it.
Sent one to Lori, and I have handouts too, that showed the same thing.
Was there a PowerPoint? Okay, that's funny.
This is what I've done in some of the counties that didn't have that ability, so. So it's just one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So thank you for having me, I am Julie Davidson, I, if you look at this, it says I am the chief operating officer and interim CEO. I was appointed as CEO last week at our board meeting, so I'm permanent in this position, and I'm happy to get around to the fourteen counties and present what we're doing. So as you can see on the second slide, it shows the fourteen counties that we serve. We serve counties from maybe four different regions. There was CSS, Eastern Iowa, um, US East Central Iowa, and then Mahassie in the lower part. So we do have counties from several different regions. We were previously known as Mental Health and Disability Services, the East Central Region, but we are changing our name to Eastern Iowa Disability Alliance to better reflect the area that we serve and the new services that we provide. Um, in addition to my position, we have a chief financial officer, and then program managers from North and South, and we have twelve disability services navigators. So the majority of our staff, oh, there it is, thank you, we have it now. Uh, I'll move on to that. Majority of our staff are navigators, and I'll explain them and then what the navigator's role is. So the disability access point is part of the ADRC network, the Aging and Disability Resource Center Network. We act similarly to what the Area Agency on Aging does, but for the disability population. Prior to the reorganization, the AAA was responsible for serving aging and for the disability population. And with the reorganization, they split the ADRC duties into aging, that the Area Agency on Aging does, and then disability, which is what the disability access points are responsible for. So the, the disability access pointer, the DAP as we tend to refer to it, is very different than what the regions were. Some boards that I've talked to thought the reorganization that we are Region 2.0, which is far from what we are right now. We have a primary purpose of assisting individuals with disabilities in navigating the system, in finding a service that will meet their needs. So with the reorganization, what the regions did was kind of split three different ways, and then some additional things were added in. And this is my interpretation. So of the services that the region had, HHS took over the management of the system. So HHS is making the rules, and the funding is going through HHS. Unlike the regions where HHS sent out money on a per capita basis, and the regions manage that money for mental health and disability services, now HHS sets the guidelines. So they set the guidelines for an individual getting funded for a service, and we assist individuals in navigating that funding, in addition to other navigation. So we basically have the same decision-making ability that we did as a region. Our job is more getting individuals where they need to be and hooking them up with the services they need to meet their, whatever their needs are. So the ASO, the Administrative Service Organization, which is Iowa Primary Care Associates, they are responsible for the mental health and substance use or any addictive disorders, those services. So that would be primarily crisis services, outpatient mental health, inpatient. Um, any of the, that would be substance abuse or mental health, inpatient and outpatient. Any of the services that are not long-term services and supports are managed by the ASO. So funding for things like sheriff transports and commitment costs, that's through the ASO now, through Iowa Primary Care. Please interrupt me anytime you have a question. And so then HHS has management, is responsible for management of the system, and this disability access point is responsible for serving individuals once they hit more of that disability level. So not crisis, not inpatient, not outpatient, but we will serve individuals with mental illness if they are in need of a long-term service and support, such as an in-home service or vocational day program. Those are the types of services that we connect individuals with and are responsible for getting funding. So the majority of our budget funds those twelve navigators. We have a small amount in our budget for short-term services and supports. Those are meant to assist individuals, hopefully before they get into the cycle of needing a long-term service. So if we could do a home vehicle mod to keep an individual in their home versus going into a long-term setting such as a nursing home or a residential care facility, that funding does come through us. We have a little bit for rent, only for individuals coming out of institutions, again, trying to keep people in the community. So that funding is controlled by the DAP, so it's a small amount of the funding. The rest of the funding is through HHS directly, providers bill them just like they would Medicaid. So a very, just to kind of give you over, an overview of the system now. The primary duties of our navigators are information and assistance. We do a lot of information and assistance and options counseling, and then service coordination of long-term services and supports is what we will be doing the least of. So information and assistance is somebody who can call us or walk in and say, I have a need, or my family member has a need. Where do I go? I don't know where to turn, I don't know how to get funding, I don't have Medicaid. So what our navigators will do with information and assistance is a very short term. They determine the need, they hook them up with a service, they help them apply for. We help people apply for Medicaid, help them get medically exempt Medicaid, and then refer them to a service, and then our job is done. And so we are hooking them up with something that will meet their needs. Options counseling is a little more involved, if somebody who has more, a lot of needs, they need somebody to really help navigate them, to help them determine what are my needs, how can I meet them, and how can I get any services funded? So we, as always, as the region was, HHS is the funder of last resort, so we will always assist individuals in hooking up with Medicaid, community agencies, anything that we can. So options counseling, we do a plan with individuals, we look at their goals, their needs, and then hook them up with services. And then service coordination of long-term services and supports is when HHS is funding something because the individual does not have Medicaid. So to start with, we were doing more of that because of what they called legacy funding. Um, any funding that was approved by the region for the first six months, HHS agreed to fund through December thirty-first. During that time, our navigators are working with individuals to ensure that either we determine that they qualify for ongoing funding through HHS, or we work with them to get a different service that will meet their needs. And so HHS does not, they want to be the funder of last resort, truly be the funder of last resort, and so we are working a lot with the MCOs and other agencies to get funding for individuals. So if HHS is funding it, then we have a navigator who would stick with them. So I kind of equate what we're doing to case management through Medicaid, except on steroids, because we do more of the information and assistance and options counseling first. So our role is really to find individuals with a disability who are, they don't even have to reach level. I mean, we don't say, do you have a disability if somebody calls us? If somebody has a need, we will assist them. But it is to try to get out and find individuals with needs and get them hooked up with services early if possible, or whenever we become aware of them or they reach out to us. Our focus up to this point has been getting and keeping staff, and getting through all of the requirements that HHS has as far as our transition plan to ensure nobody lost services during six months, and then our district plan. But we will have really started where we're focusing on trying to get out where individuals with disabilities may be, whether it's a homeless shelter, the schools. What we've heard through an assessment is that, um, they're not seeing as many children with an intellectual disability, especially getting served early. And we know that if a child, um, has interventions early, hopefully then by the time they reach adulthood, it has, they have developed some of those independent skills. And it also, if parents have a disability, often, um, maybe need additional assistance, whether it's getting Medicaid if possible for that child because of their medical expenses, or maybe some assistance in the home, some respite. So we're focusing on that, and then also finding adults working with hospitals, anybody where there may be individuals with disabilities. So, um, and I don't know what your thoughts are as far as 28E, but I will give you a little bit of information on that. If you are interested in becoming a member of the 28E, so it's kind of a convoluted, let me move to that. Kind of a convoluted, um, system with our 28E. So HHS awarded the contract for the disability access point with the East Central Region. The East, as you know, regions went away, but the East Central Region entity, the 28E entity that was formed, was not dissolved. So that 28E entity remains. In order to be a 28E entity, we have to have county partners for that 28E. So I am going out to the counties to invite individuals to be a member of that 28E. I've had some boards say, why would I want to be a member, because we don't have the decision-making ability we used to have. Um, and my answer is, is kind of twofold. One, um, it, it helps you to make decisions to ensure that we are providing a quality service for the individuals in your county. Um, the oversight of the staffing is part of what we can do. And then also, we have always relied on our boards to be trusted advisors, to give us information of what they're hearing in the counties, to bring back information to us, and so that's the other very important role. HHS has been a very good partner throughout this, we meet with them once or twice a week at a minimum. Right now, it's been more frequent, and they do listen. They are listening when we say, at first they weren't going to fund any rent, and we said, but people as part of their service need that. So they did agree, and they've continued with some of it. So we do have the ability to bring things to them, which is what I see as an important role. The boards is to bring things to us that we can then bring to HHS. So, um, unlike the 28E with the regions where a county only received services through that region if they were a member of the 28E, that's not the case with this new 28E. We have a contract with HHS to provide services to every county, all of the fourteen counties. Whether their board signs the 28E or not, we will provide the state level. So right now, we've had five or six counties of the fourteen that, I think it's six, at least six, that have, I should have looked on this, that have signed the 28E. The other counties have chosen not to sign the 28E. We did have a deadline of October thirty-first because we thought we would start the new governing board in November. After talking with our attorney in HHS, we realized that we need to keep, because of closeout of the region, we need to keep the current board through December, and then we'll start with the new 28E board January first, in January. So if your county is interested, there is still time to sign that 28E, and completely optional. I mean, it's definitely, um, up to your comfort level and what your thoughts are regarding it. So I know I talk very fast, what I gave you is, um, the half sheet is information on disability access points, and then it has our contact information. The second sheet shows a breakout of what Aging and Disability Services does, what the ASO, um, ASO's responsibilities are, and what the disability access point responsibilities are. And then the last page is our contact information for all of our navigators. We do have one navigator who is assigned just to Black Hawk heavy. We are finding that, um, we are going to need additional assistance in Black Hawk. Um, and so we have somebody else who's going to start covering some. And just so, you, you might think, well, the region had more, but realizing that the ASO also has staff covering this area for a lot of the, um, crisis services, and some of those, the, most of the mental health and addiction services. So, now I know I talk very fast, I gave you a lot of information, do you have questions for me?
Would you like to go on? Is it based on referrals, or how do people, how do you guys get clients?
So we get phone calls from agencies, we also get phone calls from family members or individuals, and we go out. So, um, we haven't done as much of the going out yet because we've had to, with all of the legacy clients, we've had to ensure that we get all of the information we need to get them funding, and so that's been a lot of our focus. But we will be going out to, if there's any events in the community going on, we want to get the word out that way. Also, like I said, schools, hitting up shelters, talking to hospitals, and so all of the community agencies that, food banks, um, any, any agencies that may come in contact with an individual who has needs.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions on the navigators. Makes perfect sense to me, there's a lot of really good organizations doing important work, and so pointing folks in the right direction. You said you guys, you all are going to be bringing on, because right now it seems really skewed from the sheet, thirteen percent. Region seven somehow is a third of the state.
Yep.
A third of the state's population. Black Hawk is thirteen percent of that, and we've got one person allocated where Lynn has two, Johnson has two, Scott.
So Johnson covers down also, they cover three counties going south. Um, and we, we looked at population size, I mean, the, the numbers were established before I came on. So we, um, are looking at the number of referrals that we're getting because we have found that some of the counties, even though they're larger, maybe don't have as many referrals. And the Lynn County, some of them are covering other counties in addition, it's not reflected on here. But yes, we do, we are looking at what, um, what the volume of calls is, and looking at the need to increase. So we have another navigator who's based out of Buchanan County, and will be, is starting to take on Black Hawk. So we may end up putting another, um, we may need to put another full-time. It was hard to know at the beginning how much to assign, yeah. And I don't know how many the Administrative Service Organization has as far as their staffing. They, to this point, have not been, um, they're just working from home, but they will be establishing some sites. Just so you know, our navigator is based out of the Area Agency on Aging. She's not there every day because the, we feel that the majority of what we do is in the community. We can have somebody sitting at the Area Agency on Aging and nobody walks in, so we aren't going to say we're there all the time because we need her out in the community with people, so.
Can you maybe just talk a little bit more on that 28E?
Yes.
What, what tangibly does that board, the board, right?
Yep.
What does that oversee or, or work toward?
So, the board, um, I mean, the, our, the regional governing board felt that, um, they would look at a quarterly meeting because there isn't as many, there aren't as many duties. So it would be the, the financial, which HHS approves our financials, but it would be approving that budget and any expenditures, and then overseeing the CEO, I mean, the CEO would read, would report to the board. And then, um, we, as quickly as things move, we don't necessarily always have everything go to the board before it's, um, sent to HHS. We had two weeks to develop an assessment, and so there was no way for it to go to the board before we sent it back. So a little bit different than the region where the board is, we are working more independently, and the board is more oversight of where the financials, and then that the CEO position is primarily what I, my understanding, or how our board has operated to this point. The other, I mean, they will approve, right now we have, our staff are employed by counties, they remain county employees, unlike CSS where it was one entity, we are moving to a single employer because we feel accountability for staff is much better that way, plus it's not the back and forth with all of the county, all of the counties. So up to this point, you know, the board has approved those MLUs with counties, the, um, contract with HHS, and then I would say oversight of, of the service itself. And the providing input on, just like you did, you know, like, hey, why, we're thirteen percent, why don't we have more? Other questions for you?
I met Julie at the ISAC conference back in August, and it's amazing the information you have today compared to what you had back then. So it's been a work in progress, so.
It, it changes by the minute. Um, we get, so like we had said at that meeting, we got operational guidance, I think in August, we started July first. And so, um, we continue to get clarification from HHS, and so they, and the same with like the assessment, we knew what it was due, but HHS was to provide us the template, and we had two weeks. So it is, I think HHS is realizing maybe that things moved very quickly, and, um, we are, we are rewriting and changing pretty much weekly, I would say, right now.
Well, just because they put the plane in the air, um, thanks for jumping the captain's seat, I guess. Uh, could not imagine how stressful that is.
You hit the first three months, yep?
Yep.
I, yes, it was a lot of hours, and then we're losing our CEO, we lost our CEO in June. And so we felt that, the board felt, we needed to get our feet on the ground and understand what our purpose was in order to know what we needed in the CEO and what we needed as far as staffing. So we are relooking at the table of organization now, and that will go to our board at our next meeting to relook at, what do we need? You know, when we went into this, we didn't have the understanding of everything that, like, HHS would be paying all of the funds. Um, I think we knew that going in, but just a true understanding of what our role was and whether, so we will be discontinuing the chief financial officer, and that will be going under the CEO. Um, she's retiring, we're not. She's retiring, we're not, and so we are reorganizing right now.
Davis, can you hear me?
State, right?
I'm sorry.
You guys received payment from the state?
Yes, the, the funds are, and I don't know what calculation they use in determining the funds, but for the ASO and for the disability access points, the funding was not by a per capita. There was some funding mechanism that they used. So all of our funds come from the state.
You guys had issues receiving payment yet or no?
But it wasn't based on some other formula that's?
They had some way of determining it, I believe. I don't know what that was. I just know that they had said when looking at it that it was not per capita. And maybe they, I think they reevaluate based upon the number of navigators we need since the majority of our funding is navigators and then other staff. But there's no, so as far as the 2080 board, there would be no financial responsibility on the parts of, on the part of the counties because the funding all comes straight through Medicaid. And that was a concern of our governing board when we signed the contract was, would the payment come? Would the payment come timely and would we get the full payment? So as long as we meet, I mean, our, HHS is very clear that we have to meet this objective, this task, and then we will get the money. And so we are always meeting those and so the money is coming to us.
Sorry, you had something, Linda?
Oh, I wasn't sure if you could hear me or not, but if you're done with asking questions, I did have a question for Julie. I don't want to interrupt. Okay. Appreciate the update, but I'm wondering about those individuals that were used to meeting with, you know, going to a location or visiting with a person one-on-one in person and not just a phone call. What, is there any type of outreach or what's being done to make sure those people are being cared for? Because quite honestly, I think many of them wouldn't pick up a phone call and just expect to have their problem resolved.
So if it's an individual, so we work with the individuals who do not have Medicaid primarily. And so if it's an individual who has those ongoing services, they would have a Medicaid case manager. With IHH transitioning away, individuals would go to Medicaid. If it's an individual who has funding through, that we are coordinating, we do meet with them. So if there are other individuals that maybe we're not aware of that used to walk into the office, that's who we need to try to figure out where we can best, how to best serve those individuals. We do have, I mean, we've published two half days at the AAA just because we don't want our navigator stuck there. So I'm not sure what individuals that you're, would be referencing that used to walk in a lot.
Um, I just, yeah, I just think like when we had the people on site and people could make contacts with those individuals, you know, it was direct and they didn't have to go through the service of a phone call or searching for what the need is and how to address it.
And that is what.
Yeah, they didn't understand the system, I think, set up, all of the complications that you're working through and, and trying to steer through, that don't, you know, have the knowledge or the understanding of how that works and how it works for them.
And that, our primary responsibility is to assist individuals in knowing how to navigate the system. But you're right, finding the individuals or being in the right spot for those individuals is the challenge. It's diff, the new system is no longer the county system that we had where every off, county had offices. And that, that makes it hard. And so as we, if, you know, as we hire additional individuals, that may, we may, we would have more availability in offices, I think. But we really don't see the walk-ins and I'm, I would guess part of it is people don't know where we're located right now and it's getting that word out.
Yes, I think when that date came, the cutoff date and that was, yeah, but there was a lot of people that weren't aware of where they go after that, so. Thanks for your continued efforts.
We'll work toward that, that's a good point. And that, that is our big goal now is to get that awareness out of where to find us and how to find us. And phones often are a barrier for individuals. Any other questions for me? I appreciate you get put on things that you're seeing in your county.
When, you said by the end of the year, you're hoping to have your 2080.
We will have to do 2080 January 1st. Yep, so as far as the 2080, I would say by the, November, if we can have that all wrapped up so we have all the signatures, we will back it up a month, so. Feel free, my number is on there, on your contact sheet. I should have put a business card on there and I forgot, so. Thank you very much for your time and for the great conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Uh, move on to item four, proclamation to support Operation Green Light for Area Veterans.
So moved.
Yolanda, Tim, go ahead and read it.
Sure. Whereas the residents of Blackhawk County have great respect, admiration and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly, selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Blackhawk County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during the first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Blackhawk County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Blackhawk County hereby declares from November 4th through 11th, 2025, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that Blackhawk County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through 11th, 2025.
Motion on that, no?
Yep, do a motion in a second.
So moved?
Second.
All right. And good morning, Board. Yolando Lovelace, the Director of Blackhawk County Veterans Fairs. Just want to take two minutes out of my day to thank you for supporting Operation Green Light. When you really read this, is there's nothing else to say behind it? Even I think about, you know, the 30 years that I served and then the transition I had to make and then so many others had to make, coming out of a military environment, back into society. How to reacclimate yourselves can be a difficult situation. Lights have a purpose in the military, whether it's green or red, yellow, it all means something. And so we thank you for the fourth year of supporting this. I take my hat off to being the representative of Blackhawk County. And I'm grateful and appreciative that the Board of Supervisors, you that sit here, are, you have 100% of our back in supporting our, our role as veterans, but also our role as veteran service officers supporting other veterans. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for supporting this proclamation. And again, when you look at it, now we're exceeding our values with collaboration, our values with service and our values with, I would say, transparency. So thank you again on behalf of all the 71, 100 veterans that are in Blackhawk County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and ask the proclamation, that'd probably be a good idea. Go ahead.
Brand?
Yes.
Kurtanbock?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Oh, yes. All right. Yolando, I do think you should have like a Bluetooth speaker that you carry at all times, a little ZZ Top, Sharpless Man. I'm under the weather a little bit, so. Squeezed in. Proclamation.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate you, my dear.
Thank you, Yolando, for reinforcing our mission statement values.
All right. Did we lose? Rich, you know that we're still in the meeting? All right, well, okay. Move on to claims and payments. Resolution of the Board of Supervisors approving expenditures, the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against various settlements of such claims.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Wedener, go ahead and go as slow as you'd like.
Okay. Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $393,924.44. And out of that, we are paying $6,494.27 for the 60-40 fund. There were not too many large or significant amounts today. We are making a payment for the road department to truck center companies for a single axle dump truck in the amount of $106,565. Everything appears to be in order.
Well, 60-40 is a little higher, is it?
It is a little higher. We, there was an air conditioner for the range purchased from Menards for $3,459.76. And some supplies, weed spray, weed spray, things like that. And our typical courthouse security bill.
Okay, very good. Well, uh, this is a resolution. Roll call, please.
Kurtanbock.
Oh, Kurtanbock, you approving the financials?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Uh, item six, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nikris, just a roads update. We are busy blading some roads and we are still doing quite a few ditch cleanouts. And then we're following right behind that with a roadside biologist is seeding those bare, that, those bare ground areas. A few other things I wanted to mention, as Michelle mentioned, we have received, or Don's truck has received our dump truck. The chassis is, has been delivered from Freeland and is now being outfitted with the dump box and all the winter snow equipment that's being done by Don's. And that, that's going to take probably six or eight more months to, for Henderson to supply the parts needed to get those, that dump truck complete. In order to be more collaborative and efficient with the city of Waterloo, we are relooking at our 2080 agreement with the city of Waterloo. We've been having some discussions with them in how we, you know, maintain the roads that we either share as a split jurisdiction or we end and they are able, we end in the middle of a mile, for example. So we've been working with them and I'm hoping that we can bring that back to you by the end of the year possibly. It has to go through the city first, so we are working with that, with them on that. And then also I wanted to talk very, very briefly about the Washburn Drainage District. You, of course, are the Board of Directors for that Drainage District. In many counties, the engineer can be an assistant or provide some expertise. I would say that this comes up occasionally throughout the year and did resurface a few weeks ago at our local agency most tax meeting with some of the residents of Washburn. I would be happy to put together a work session. I just wanted to know what your, what that priority might be and what you would like to focus on if that is what you choose with directing to do.
This came up when we were in Washburn and a few emails, we've been getting information. I know Tim's got a box at his desk with dust on it. I think it behooves to build a work session just to learn about the history of the ditch districts and then find out more what our responsibilities are. The current issue in Washburn is, it's not been mowed. There is trees growing up. I've been approached now by two different individuals that have interest in helping keep it mowed. But I think that's donating, I don't think it's necessarily the best option right now with that as well. It is going property and I think we need to come up with something for safeguarding accounting for other issues there. But right now I just, I personally would like to learn more of what our responsibility is with ditch districts and kind of go from there and then look what we need for getting the issues addressed there for Washburn.
I, I would agree. I think I stated in email earlier that I thought the work session is always good to kind of have additional updates, but also to have some of that history and remind ourselves of it as well as learn new. So it's not just for new supervisors, it's for the rest of us too. So thanks, Rich.
How soon? Early December. I mean, we got other issues right now that Kathy's working on, so I don't want to overburden her right now with that. What do you think, Kathy?
The first part of December sounds pretty doable.
What's for me?
I'll suggest the, yeah, the second Tuesday of December.
Sounds good, sounds good.
I'll send you an email. I can't answer any questions about anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Board. Caitlin Weber, I'm Public Health Director. I just wanted to share a opportunity that just came to our Board of Health last Wednesday at their regular meeting for Thrive, the Thrive Iowa Initiative. Blackhawk County Public Health has been invited to serve as a backbone organization for the Thrive Iowa Initiative. Thrive Iowa is a community-led initiative to move families from crisis to career utilizing the collective impact model with support from Restore Hope. The initiative's overarching goals include family stability in 13 areas of social determinants of health and an emphasis on family preservation and prevention of child welfare crises. The initiative provides training, collaborative case management and technical support to create sustainable impactful changes in each participating site, which we would be one. It is funded by the State of Iowa Temporary Assistance for Navy Families Retained Law Grant, which is awarded to the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. Though Restore Hope out of Little Rock, Arkansas has, is a direct contractor with Iowa Department of Health and Human Services and our contract is a subcontract with Restore Hope. The initial agreement is to serve, initially, the initial agreement to serve as the backbone organization is a 12-month agreement with the option to extend for two additional one-year extensions. Board of Health did approve us to proceed with this contract as it does align with our 2024 Community Health Assessment or in our 2025 Community Health Improvement Plan Priority of Economic Stability for the community. Additionally, Public Health has previously convened community health workers and related professions with the goal of improving community-wide care coordination, which is in close alignment with this project. As the backbone organization, we would be responsible for hiring a community initiative coordinator and two family navigators. So we are going to proceed with hiring that community initiative coordinator from approval of the Board of Health. And I just wanted to keep the Board of Supervisors apprised of this grant and the staffing components with it and the terms of the grant. The total award is for $277,000. Um, the total award is for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Um, and we do expect a, uh, subsequent award from Iowa HHS for an additional forty-five thousand dollars. Are there any questions for me on this?
This is a one-time award?
Um.
As far as you know?
As far as I know, the project period is three years. Uh, yes.
So you gotta break the two seventy-seven down, uh, by three years to support employees, then?
The two seventy-seven is the one-year budget period. So we anticipate two seventy-seven, um, every year, for each of three years.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions?
Galen, uh, Julie was here this morning doing her presentation. When we get approached by someone, generally, my first thing is to call you and ask for direction. Like, that still sound like best interest for us and the county?
Yeah, uh, yeah. Behavioral health alignment is, I mean, not core to public health, but we're definitely paying, playing close attention to it because there are pieces of it that will really happen in public health. So I definitely appreciate the connection and to see where those pieces of overlap are. So we can, um, make connections if they aren't already there. So, yeah, that is definitely fine with me. Thank you, Board. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good morning. Gabby Duette, Marketing Coordinator. Uh, the beginning of September, I did a presentation on accessibility and how we needed to become, have a plan in place for accessibility compliance by April of twenty-twenty-six. So I just wanted to give you an update that I've been working closely with Micah from Public Health, and we've made the following progress. Uh, we have drafted an accessibility plan draft, uh, outlining some key goals, timelines, and responsibilities. And we've drafted a preliminary list of staff that we think would need to help us in identifying areas of the website that need to be updated, as well as, um, some people that will need training for sociability and, social media and accessibility. And we've completed interviews and, um, and references with five accessibility vendors to evaluate potential partners. And so we plan on, we presented this to our website planning team last week, and we would like to make a board presentation on November eighteenth. But I just wanted you to know kind of where we're at, uh, with the process and that we're still moving right along, but we do plan to present something for you, um, in two weeks. Any questions? Great question. Thank you.
All right. Any others on the, online or in the room? No, we'll move to item seven. Minim approval for the special session of October twenty-seventh and the regular session of October twenty-eighth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item eight, consent agenda. The items listed below will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion, unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Kurtyn Bog?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Item nine, uh, contract and agreements. This is a resolution of the agreement between Blackhawk County and QFB Energy for natural grass, sorry, natural gas brokerage and consulting services, uh, to manage and negotiate contracts for natural gas purchasing on behalf of nine county facilities for a twenty-four month period with an estimated annual service fee between three, uh, thirty-five hundred and five thousand dollars. Be approved as recommended by Board of Given Facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Good morning, Board. Roy Given, uh, Facilities Director. Uh, as the agenda mentioned, uh, we are asking for a twenty-four month agreement with QFB. Uh, this is to negotiate and manage our natural gas contracts, uh, by securing the lowest market pricing. One of the services, uh, would be to consolidate the billing, streamlining expense tracking for better budget visibility. Um, one thing that I find probably the most intriguing about this agreement is historically, we would, uh, do a fixed rate lock-in purchase, say for our largest volume, which would be the jail. This is for nine, all nine facilities, um, but we also have the ability to do a, a hybrid. So we would, uh, we could actually do a variable plus a fixed, uh, which would help us in the winter months that are mild, um, where we might have a large storage, uh, availability of nat- natural gas. Um, so this really allows this broker to, uh, manage that, look at that, and predict that. Um, we will get monthly contract performance reports, uh, that will outline, uh, where we're positioning ourselves and, uh, what to expect. Based on historical usages, we are anticipating anywhere from a ten to thirteen thousand dollar a year, uh, savings. Um, obviously, that can fluctuate, uh, depending on, you know, severity of our winter months. So, uh, with all of that, I would like to recommend that the board approve a twenty-four month agreement with, uh, QFB Consultants.
Roy, when would this go into effect?
Uh, soon as I get a, a final contract from them, I would think probably within a week.
Okay. Before December first, you have them?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And we had given our thirty-day notice, uh, uh, last month, uh, to, uh, our Mid-American, uh, our utility company here to get out of the, uh, existing fixed contract that we're in. So we are free to, uh, roam the market now, so.
How, Roy, how long was that contract?
Uh.
Proceed, uh, with Mid-American.
Uh, we, uh, originally did it for, uh, for the six months, the six winter months, but it's just, it rolls over every year.
Gotcha.
Um, so until you give it its thirty-day, uh, release notice that you want out of the contract, it just keeps rolling over. We've been, we've been with Constellation, uh, for, I believe, three years.
Roy, do we have a similar out clause for this company?
We do. There is a thirty-day out clause on, in, uh, which was, uh, stated in the request for proposal.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
That's all I got, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So resolution, roll call, please. Schwartz?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Kurtyn Bog?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
All?
Yes.
Item A, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held on, uh, nine, held at nine oh five on Tuesday, November eighteenth in Ward Room Two oh one of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, under proposed ordinance number seven seven dash three zero one requested by Lance Terrell to rezone zero point six three acres of land from C Commercial District to R M Residential Multi, uh, Multiple District for the purpose of converting a church to a residential dwelling unit located at nine eight zero one Burton Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion carries. Item B, uh, motion that the reappointment of Rosario Garcia Fino to the Blackhawk County Board of Health for a three-year term be approved effective January one, two thousand twenty-six.
So moved.
Quick.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item ten C, discussion of possible board action to discuss estimates from print innovations of Waterloo, Iowa for county, uh, rebranding graphics from Debbie.
Good morning again. So I sent a chart of the areas of signage that we've been discussing. Um, I guess my goals today are to find out if you want to move forward with, uh, the board areas, so that would be this back wall, um, the windows outside of the board office, and then the windows outside of the courthouse that I was planning to cover with what was left of the strategic plan rollout, the seven thousand dollars that we had budgeted for that. And then, um, I do have, um, money in the signage line item in the marketing budget that we could cover for that. And this isn't an approval of a design. Um, this is an approval for them to start designing. And then, uh, we would not move forward without board approval in those areas. And then, eventually, also, if, if I can get some feedback on what you'd like to see on the wall, I've heard some kind of different, um, discussions, whether we did, um, prints, or if we did a collage, or if we did a kind of a word art thing. Um, and then finally, if you were wanting the meeting rooms to be, some signage in the meeting rooms. So those were the three things I'm hoping to talk about today.
Meeting rooms, I definitely think we should have some, some of those.
And all three? So what I had, had them measure out was the conference room in the basement and then, um, the two ten A, which is between assessors and election, assessors and auditor, and the IT conference room. I wasn't certain since they used the assessors, uh, or that conference room between the assessors, if, if that precluded it from having signage or not, since the assessor is part of Blackhawk County but also independent of Blackhawk County.
We use it too.
Yeah. I mean, it's actually been a very well utilized conference room even for our action planning.
And it is our building.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think this is just, uh, sort of authorization for us to get some concepts and start the discussions. I mean, I'm supportive of at least having them propose, you know, put some work in on all of these spaces. Thanks for the clarification this morning.
Yes, absolutely.
Tavis, did you drop the, uh, initial for this?
Yeah.
I think we just leave it to Tavis.
pencil sketches, um, welcome, yes.
Be careful. I think I might have thrown out just putting Tavis on the backboard.
Do you need a motion to move forward?
I don't know what I need. Um, I just didn't feel like I could move forward, especially with the boardroom area and the board office windows. Um, I didn't, I wanted to make sure that the, the board was, um, interested in moving forward with that. Uh, when we did the, uh, initial strategic plan after the internal, uh, rollout and we came back and we presented, um, to everyone from the strategic plan team, there were a lot of ideas thrown out about where we could do signage. It included elevators and it included, like, there was a lot of ideas thrown out. And so within the con, the constraints of our budget and what would be the most visible and impactful for people coming into the courthouse, these were some of the areas we identified. And if there are more, uh, areas that we want to do later, uh, we could certainly look into that maybe in, in subsequent fiscal years. But these were kind of the areas. And so I just wanted to make sure after that kind of brainstorming session back in August that these were areas that you also were on, um, target with and that we should move forward with some design ideas.
We've put a lot of effort and energy and money into developing this strategic plan. And it doesn't need to be as hot as you plan up on the top shelf.
Yes, right.
So I think it's, it behooves us to show what we've invested in, in, to our people that work for this county in that process. Yeah, I like the, uh, the thought of the, the courthouse entry.
Yeah, I support moving forward, including the, the various conference rooms as well.
So the fifteen, I'm sorry, I misread that.
No. I was gonna say, I support moving forward with the designs. We know how it gets more difficult as we get weighed into that part, but that sounds great. Thanks, Gabby.
Yeah. Did you have something else, Justin?
No, I just misread. And so what, what are we looking at in total for what we have to play with?
So, um, the, of those three areas, the exterior courthouse entryway, the back room here of the room here, and the windows outside of our board office, um, the total estimate is between twenty-eight hundred and three thousand. There's fifteen eighteen left in what we identified as strategic plan rollout. But then I do have an additional, no, uh, two thousand dollars in the signs, signage line item in the marketing budget that we could cover that.
Yeah, I'm good to go. I don't think other questions, you know?
Well, then I will get back to you when, um, when they have some designs and tell them to start moving forward. And then I think there was a question about, of this list, not every department is on it. I did want to make sure that you know that every department has received, um, a sign similar to what we have for our badge codes that they can, that replaces the gap M in their, uh, staff areas. But not every department is public facing. So this list are areas that are public facing that also said that they would like some signage in their office, and that would be on their budget.
Excellent.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks. You got everything you need from us?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item ten D, discussion of possible board action, a contribution in the amount of one thousand dollars in the state of Iowa with an association of counties to be used towards legal fees for participate, for participation in filing, uh, of an amicus brief in the causeer versus Shelby County in response of ISAC's October twentieth, twenty twenty-five request.
I'll, I'll kind of start off. Uh, when I was at the ISAC, uh, conference back in August, there was, uh, a lot of conversation about this, the lawsuits moving forward. They were still at that point trying to figure direction where they wanted to go with this. Since then, uh, last week, I sat in on a Zoom meeting that gave the explanation. Got that, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to watch that video from that, uh, Zoom meeting and that explanation. Uh, since then, I've received several emails from, uh, folks in Blackhawk County that do have farmland in other counties. But, uh, my personal thought on this is I believe we owe to our property owners here in Blackhawk County that we are also interested in preserving their property here as well. This lawsuit isn't just specific to Shelby or Story counties. Uh, there is a good chance this ends up going to the Supreme Court contesting, uh, the language that, uh, carbon, Summit Carbon's trying to force and take over properties, private properties. And that's where the test might play. It was my suggestion to do the, instead of just the minimum five hundred, do a thousand, uh, to move this in forward in Blackhawk County.
Mike, I was wondering if you wanted to make a few comments. You kind of did a brief summary for everyone, and it might be good for the public, uh, in regard to this as well.
You bet. So bottom line.
Thought about going, making the public. Somebody needs muted.
Bottom line is, and this is to kind of piggyback off of what Rich just said, this is a case that doesn't just have implications for Blackhawk County. It's got implications potentially nationally. Uh, so what's happened in a nutshell is that, uh, somewhat in response to, uh, to plans by a company called Summit Carbon Solutions, uh, Story and Shelby Counties enacted some setback requirements that would impact, uh, the carbon pipelines that were proposed. Uh, immediately, or more or less immediately after giving notice of these ordinances, the potential for daily fines for violation of these ordinances, Summit challenged them in federal court. Uh, the district court granted a motion for summary judgment. By the way, motions for summary judgment are filed when there's no dispute as any material fact. Uh, they granted a motion for summary judgment filed by Summit and declared the, uh, the setback requirements void under the Federal Pipeline Safety Act. This act, uh, effectively prohibits, uh, safety regulation of pipelines at the state level level. The real, the real kick, the real question here is whether setback requirements, which are traditional, uh, zoning type requirements, uh, were code type acqui, you know, building code type requirements. The question is whether these are prohibited, uh, as, uh, safety legislation or safety ordinances. Uh, there is a circuit split. Uh, the Fourth and Fifth Circuits had already ruled that setback requirements were not prohibited under the Pipeline Safety Act. However, uh, the A Circuit, which is the circuit in which we reside, that's a district. in which we reside, that's a district involving, among other states, includes Iowa and Missouri. And the reason I bring up those two is because they hear cases in St. Louis. But the, but in any event, the A Circuit ruled in a two to one ruling that it, that it violates, the setback requirements violate the Pipeline Safety Act. Now, if you dig in further, and I've dug in somewhat further, you'll see there was also aspects of the appellate decision by the A Circuit, where they also effectively say there's a conflict with certain state laws as well, or state law preemption in action by the Iowa Utilities Commission. And incidentally, it didn't appear from my, my skimming of that decision. It's, it's not a hugely long decision, but it's somewhat lengthy decision, that the dissenting judge actually agreed with the majority that it may have violated the state law preemption. There was an initial effort in the federal case to certify the question, the Iowa Supreme Court before it was heard by, by the federal district court, but that, that motion was denied because the case is primarily premised on the federal act. So the question becomes then, you know, what are the chances of success, both in terms of getting the Supreme Court to hear this, and in terms of getting favorable decision? And I'm not, I will say this. Number one, the chances, just as a straight up number, of getting the Supreme Court to even take your case are about 1%, give or take, might be less than that now. However, there are reasons, and if you watched the video, you saw some of this, there are reasons that this case may be more likely to be accepted. For one thing, there's a circuit split. That is something that the Supreme Court of the United States frequently moves it to resolve, because otherwise what you have is you have conflicting precedent as to the same law. So that increases the likelihood. How much I can't say, but it increases the likelihood that the Supreme Court will grant what they call a writ of certiorari, or a writ of cert. That just means that they're going to grant further review. I would also say that I think the fact that this is something that impacts government regulation primarily also increases the odds, at least somewhat, that the Supreme Court's going to take this case up. And finally, I will say, if you, we don't make an effort like this, you know, that's just going to decrease the chances that the Supreme Court will take this. I don't mean necessarily the board making the effort to contribute to this fund, but if the, if the brief that is, that is going to be filed in favor of the courts taking this case isn't filed, then that decreases the likelihood of success. And there are also other significant organizations that are, that are also planning to file briefs in support of this, including, I noted the Farm Bureau, but there were others. And there will be briefs, there will be amicus briefs filed on the other side as well, as we've already seen at the district court level. I believe the Petroleum Institute was on there, and there may have been, made it somebody else as well. So it's, it's hard, I think that the brief is going to be filed either way, but you, but what happened is, you know, these things, they come up kind of quickly, appellate deadlines, and the decision had to be made quickly. And so, and they're, they're looking for a way to fund it. What ISAC did is they found a firm that is accustomed to filing matters with the US Supreme Court, and that firm was willing to cap its fees at a grand total of $25,000. Because of that, we know what it's going to take to pay for this. And so, kind of seeing that not all counties may agree to participate, they asked for effectively a minimum contribution of $500 for this fund to go ahead and, go ahead with this, finding, preparing and filing this, this amicus brief. I would, you know, the question before us right now isn't about the law, or whether it's good or bad so much as, well, it is about, if you think there's a problem with the way the rule as to county home rule, as to local control. This is where, you know, counties, ISAC's taking the position, and others are taking the position that, hey, we need to band together because it's going to affect us as well. And, and so really the question before the board today is whether to help in that funding effort. I know that, that Rich had proposed $1,000. I can tell you that ISAC, I think this is in my email and attachment, they proposed 500 as a minimum. And so that's the question before us. But if there are any other questions for me, I'll do my best to answer them. This is complex stuff, as, as it impacts, you know, as to what constitutes a safety requirement, what is prohibited as a safety requirement under the federal law. But this, the bottom line is, this gets down to what powers counties have under Chapter 331, or specifically 331.301. Any questions?
Do we know what some of these are, particularly larger counties, have any sign done? Do we have an idea of what they're contributing at, under the ISAC, said minimum of 500?
Yeah.
But just didn't know if there was a-
I haven't heard anything from the other counties yet. And I know that there's a couple of counties that wanted to, but they don't have the funds to. So.
Larger counties, you mean?
Small.
I'd be pretty shocked if Story County wasn't, you know, all over the summer, they've had to foot their own bill as well.
They did also say in the letter that they left it up to each county, they could give more or less than 500. So I would hope all counties could reach into their pockets and those coffers and find some funding that would show their support, however that amount would be. That was the only thing. I was very curious to hear what our supervisors felt. The reasons, I, I think, were very made, very clear in Mr. Whipple, I think the Allers attorney, his summary as well, Mike, and yours. I think the webinar was very helpful. I have obviously some concerns from the fact that home rule and our role as county supervisors continues to be diminished or lessened all the time. And this was a, certainly a situation where it looks like, you know, this would affect the whole state of Iowa, and certainly all of us as counties have a role in, in that. I was a little concerned also that our role as supervisors, we are charged with the safety of our county and our residents, and that seemed to be something disregarded, that, you know, they really didn't care about. They did care about some of the landowners, but they didn't care about county government's role. So to me, that was a concern. And like I say, definitely home rule. So I guess just based on those, I felt that we would want to support it. The fact that with some contribution, I was thinking at least of the $500. I did wonder, the same question, Tavis, that you asked about what others were doing, or, or, you know, where we would fall along that spectrum. But I know, Rich, we moved the decision up as well. And I don't know if it's even fair to look at what other counties would do, or are willing to do, or should do in this. But definitely feel I would support, want to support doing at least the $500, but would love to hear what the rest of the supervisors feel as well.
This is, Chris, I'm supportive of either the 500 or the 1,000, and, and hope that it would inspire other counties to do it. This might be a case where we get an opportunity to, to lead on this a little bit, and be one of the first counties in. The entire time I've been in office, home rule's just been getting eroded and eroded, and it's supposed to be in our constitution. I think that this is an important stand to support. I could see this impacting all sorts of things beyond pipelines, you know, any sorts of developments, whether they're utility or whatever. This could have implications over the future. And so I think it's important that we join in.
Am I interpreting this right? So essentially, this is just to increase the probability that the Supreme, Supreme Court would take it, to basically weed out whether or not state law has stepped on the toes of federal law?
Almost. It is to increase the odds that the Supreme Court takes it. But the, the crux of the issue is just to how much federal law and/or state law preempts county legislation. That's what it really boils down to, because these are two county defendants that have attempted to enact, or they have enacted, setback requirements. But they've used this federal act, among other, among other provisions, to invalidate these county ordinances, these county setback requirements. And the hope is that the Supreme Court will then reverse it and allow these setback requirements. I don't have to tell any of you this, but setback requirements are traditionally within the province of local governments. They're common zoning ordinances, they play in the building codes. So they're, they're common, they're much more commonly local matters than typically federal.
I mean, essentially an easement, right? Property setback, or is it different?
Well, it's, it's not, an easement is a, is a right to use somebody else's property. So they're seeking easements for doing this. But a setback is how far from a structure or property that's something like that, that something can be constructed. There are, there are safety and other reasons for setbacks, but they're not just for safety reasons.
Gotcha, okay.
And I believe one of the things that happened, Mike, and correct me if I'm wrong, was the counties defined setbacks for the company to operate within, and the company then turned around and sued the county.
Correct.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I believe, I would add this, just because I, I've wondered if it might be on, on anybody's mind on this, but the, I believe that Beth Manley of ISAC, she's ISAC's general counsel, did make a statement, I don't remember exactly what it was, as to how, you know, if the funds exceeded the $25,000, how they would handle that as well, although I think that would be determined later on, so.
I wasn't sure. I was thinking that ISAC had really kind of taken this on, and was looking for the counties to support, you know, the position and the effort, and for the reasons that they, I think this has been going on for several years, as Rich mentioned, or a couple of years. And so now, just kind of weighing into this point with, with this amicus brief being possible, and a company was hired that is very, I don't know, is it's more successful or much more experienced in writing this. So I think they felt the $25,000 was extremely low, and were very pleased, I guess, to see, receive that, that fee wouldn't be higher.
Well, and these are commonly, I didn't catch where the law firms are, but they're commonly DC area firms, or at least, you know, very large firms from, from large cities. They tend, generally when you think of hourly fees for attorneys, they can be very, very high for, for those areas. But you want someone who has familiarity going before the Supreme Court, getting a matter before the Supreme Court. I don't know the process that ISAC went through to, to locate this firm, but I, but I trust the process, I trust what they were, what their objective was, which was to find someone who had successful experience in doing this.
Yeah, I'm good with 1,000.
Is that a motion?
I'm moved.
Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and do a roll call. Brand?
Yes.
Oops, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Brand?
Yes.
Kirk Ma?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go to reports or information from the board.
We kind of talked about it earlier, I just wanted to touch base again on the Durange District issue. Again, we've been approached with the folks out there in Washburn. It's an issue that ain't going to go away. It's something we're going to have to deal with sooner or later. And just, at this point now, I've had two people come and talk to me about the issue. So I'm pleased Kathy's going to be able to help us get some education on moving forward with it.
And this, this was mentioned previously, other years, Rich. I think you and I just had a brief comment or two about it, where the community could fund, put funds aside, you know, and have some of those things done, but that the county was restricted from doing those on their own. So, yeah, looking for solutions is great, but the community might have to be a part of the solution as well.
Yeah, interested to hear on Washburn, assuming through policy review, on that right way issue, maybe clarification. Let's see how that sort of takes shape.
First thing to do there is, I, I've not had a question directed to me, but I need to-
It's common.
Yeah, I figured it was, because the question's whether existing ordinances cover the issue, first of all. Secondly, if not, whether we can in reverse regulate that. There are sometimes constitutional implications there for ex post facto laws, and we'll have to take a look at that. I would be surprised there, and I'm kind of surprised to hear at least so far, that there's no way that we can regulate it on right of way. I am really surprised. That's the first thing I can press.
All right. Any other report from the board? Everyone moved into closed session? All right. 11A, resolution to proceed into closed session for discussion of strategy with counsel in matters that are presently in litigation, or where litigation is imminent for disclosure, would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in the litigation pursuant to Iowa Code subsection 21.5(c). So moved?
Second. After a brief recess.
Yeah, resolution, do a roll call.
Kirk Ma?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
We'll do a brief recess.
Brief recess, I'm sorry.
When we said before you go. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn the board of supervisors' meeting in closed session?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, Sinell?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
So moved.
All moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.